That's better.
Uh huh. Eureka.
One of the little, I forgot to change something on the meeting.
I can hear.
Yay.
All right.
Hi, James.
Hello, Lynn.
Give us a few minutes to get some housekeeping out of the way and you're the first on our agenda.
All right, thank you.
All right, pretty much got everyone on here. Kate. Right, Diane, you all set for minutes?
Yep.
Right, so let's get this meeting started at 7:11. Kent Park and Rec regular monthly meeting, special monthly meeting, I guess it is. Can I have a motion to elevate the alternates, please?
Um, where's Dom go?
West Virginia.
Excuse me?
A motion to elevate the alternates.
Okay, can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Michael. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, acceptance of the agenda, really can't amend it on a special meeting anyway, so a motion to accept, please.
So moved.
Thank you, second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
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 Correspondents, Blythe, have you seen anything that needs to be brought up?
Nothing specific, just what I had forwarded to you, Lynn. As I, as I look on the Park and Rec email, if there's something that looks like we need to get back to somebody, or there's an unpaid bill or something like that, I do forward it along, but otherwise, I'm just making sure that we, that the inbox doesn't glut up with a whole bunch of stuff, so no, nothing, nothing critical.
And I'll get to those emails tomorrow on my list.
Is that, is that okay, an okay practice for you? I just, Lynn, I just, you know, we never really talked about what you wanted us to do. If that worked for you, is that okay?
Yeah, I'll send you an email back on what to do with it, or I'll handle it.
Sounds good.
Okay, public and invited guests, we have Mr. James Valeski here, who is our first order of business, will talk about pickleball. We don't have a director's report, so we can go straight to pickleball. James, welcome.
Thank you.
Tell us all about it.
Well, I've been coming out to Kent the last two summers and spend the summers there. I'm currently in Phoenix, Arizona, Scottsdale area. And basically, I was a counseling psychologist in Chicago, but I was also a tennis pro. But when I retired from that and came out to Scottsdale, they asked if I could do pickleball. So since 2014, I've been a pickleball pro, teaching pro out in the Scottsdale area. And so when I started coming to Kent, I went to your tennis courts there and, and basically adjusted to play pickleball there, and would run into people every now and then that said, hello, you know, what are you doing? And, you know, explain what pickleball was. And what I found was that over these years, kind of if you build it, they will come. Pickleball's been the fastest growing adult sport in America in the last, you know, decade. And it's a very easy sport to teach compared to tennis. It's, it's quickly becoming kind of the sport of choice for a lot of physical education programs, because it takes a lot less time to learn pickleball, a lot less expense, you can get a lot more people on a court. And so that's kind of what I've been involved in the last seven years, so right before we took off for the summer, at the end of the summer last year, stopped in the Parks and Rec and talked to them as far as if they'd like be interested in getting a program going. It can be started kind of very, with very low, low cost and effort to get it started, but that was kind of the starting point to see if you would have an interest in starting something in pickleball.
I think in the last couple of meetings where I brought up your name and the idea, the commissioners seemed pretty excited, so I'll leave it up to them to ask questions, or...
Yeah, I have one. James, hi, my name's John Grant, how are you?
Good, John.
Listen, how would you do, how would you go about doing this? I mean, would you paint over the, the tennis court now, or how would you do this exactly?
Well, there's a couple, there's a couple options for you. Typically, with the courts you now have, easily, the only difference between the net height is two inches, so if you had cranks on both of those, you could just crank down the net two inches, so that wouldn't be any problem. You could typically, what they do at the lowest cost is they would paint a pickleball court line on each of the tennis courts or one of the tennis courts. And usually, they do that with a light blue paint, so it doesn't interfere much with the tennis court, and can easily be used for a tennis court with that on there. And then you just adjust that height, and you play pickleball, and you play pickleball, and crank it up to play tennis. That'd be kind of the easiest, least expensive way of doing it. The other way of doing is you can easily fit two pickleball courts on one tennis court, in which case you paint the line on either side of the nets, but then you would need to get a portable net. Portable nets try a range between $200 and $350 for a net, you know, in the standard that they're on, so that would run into more money with that. But that's another way of doing it. And then typically, they can just be rolled or put to the side of the court when you're playing tennis, and then put back on when you play pickleball.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone have any other questions?
I don't have a question, I will just offer an observation, which is I, I actually have a home at a 50-plus adult community on a lake, and pickleball was introduced last year, and you could barely find a spot about two months in. It is amazingly popular. I think that if we're looking for activities for people in the town, that people would be very, very interested in, this is a fantastic option, and I'm just glad we have someone local who is interested in guiding us, so thank you for coming.
Blythe, I have one question for you. What do they charge for that, why?
Nothing, because, you know, I mean, we pay association fees, so the use of the tennis courts is part of that fee, but you don't have to pay additional for that, you just have to sign up.
Okay, James, what, what would you charge for something like that, James?
Okay, well, you know, I've worked with different organizations, typically, you know, what, what I have charged, usually, we would do something like a free night where we just kind of have an open, open court thing where we kind of show them what pickleball is, and I have extra paddles and balls and supply all that just to get people thinking about it. And then it's run in different ways, for example, if it's through a park district, or, or like I've worked with a number of private clubs or whatever, usually, there's an hourly rate, and, you know, I've tried to keep my rates low, because I'd rather do more teaching and have more people do it than whatever. So usually, like for a group lesson, you know, the hour fee would be $40 divided by how many people there are, so four people take the lesson, it'd be $10 apiece. And then a certain percentage of that goes to, you know, the club or the, the park district, and so they can, you know, use that however they need for, for their purposes. When we started it, like at the most recent club I was at, you know, we probably had 60, 70 people kind of showing up every time we would do the lessons, and, and, you know, if you build it, they will come, they, it grows very quickly. And then that leads to whether people want to do private things or group things, or you can have socials with things, it's a very social game. So, you know, there's a lot of different ways you can go with it.
I don't know a lot about it, but you said that you could fit more people on the court than with tennis, so how many people can you fit on a court?
Well, as far as with the courts you have there, you know, it depends upon what you want to do with that. Again, if you're just lowering the nets, you know, you would have two pickleball courts, just like the tennis courts. If you decided to put a pickleball on either side of the net, then you'd have four pickleball courts that could be going. But then you'd have to get, you know, your, you know, your, your mobile nets for that, but that would be a little more expensive for things. So you could easily fit four pickleball courts on there. I mean, we have places where they do away with tennis, and then they can get as many as six to eight pickleball courts on the same space.
So is it still two singles or doubles, like tennis?
Usually, pickleball is played with doubles. For body, in fact, pickleball playing singles is probably a little more rigorous than playing tennis singles, so most people love the doubles, and it's a more social game. What's nice about it is, you know, in my lesson groups, I have people from four to 94. You know, it's both is a family game, so again, you can, I can get people playing pickleball in an hour. When I did tennis, you know, you, you'd have six lessons just to try to get a serve in, so it was a very fast way to learn and get, get playing right away.
Okay. It sounds like everyone is interested. And when would you want something like this to start? When will you be back out here?
This year, we'll be coming out in May 24th, and like I'm saying, I was there June, July, and August, and then after Labor Day sometime. We're somewhat flexible, so sometimes we can rearrange schedules depending upon things that are happening. But, you know, for sure, those three summer months, and then like I said, it'd be just a matter of, you know, how you'd like to work with getting it started and promoted and, and getting people playing. Usually, one of the questions that comes up is they say, well, what about tennis players and the tennis courts? And, you know, that's something for your consideration, sometimes they designate certain time for pickleball, certain time for tennis. Sometimes you do one court with like two pickleball courts on one court and leave the tennis court alone, so you can have both going on. So that's usually a consideration too, to make sure all sensitivities are covered.
I have one more question, James. Can you, can you send us over what, what the diagram would look like on a tennis court?
Yeah, basically, it is the dimensions of a badminton court. It is 44 feet long by 20 feet wide. And on each side of the court, it's really divided into a 22-foot segment where there's a seven-foot area from the net, which is called the kitchen or the non- valley zone, and then a 15-foot section beyond that, so 22 feet on each side. On the USA Pickleball website, they have all the dimensions and, you know, things about constructing or painting or doing a pickleball court, so they're an excellent source for that as well.
Great, thank you.
James, what would be your hourly rate for conducting a class?
Well, what I've kind of done for the last seven years is I charge 40 for the hour, and then give back whatever the Park and Rec takes as their percentage. Typically, around here, and again, I don't know, you know, here in Scottsdale, you know, people try charge 60 to $100 an hour for tennis, so the 40 an hour is usually a lot better rate for most people. And I found that that's been a really good rate for a lot of people wanting to take advantage of that. I with people wanting to do it.
You know, I, I wonder if we couldn't set something up where, you know, I, I would think that if we promoted it correctly, we could have a couple of different weeks, once you get back here, James, of some instruction, and, you know, figure out what percentage we would, what we would charge the, the people who came down, and then pay you, but also I would think the, maybe the mobile nets, if we don't want to necessarily stripe the tennis courts, just to see where, where we go. If pickleball takes off, we could certainly then talk about striping the, striping the courts, but my feeling is, you know, figuring out how to kind of make some, the money that might offset the purchase of those mobile nets, as you said, and then kind of seeing where we go from there, and if it, you know, if it really takes hold, then we can talk about things like scheduling for tennis versus pickleball, or are there certain days of the week and times when, when the pickleball goes out, and maybe there's a tennis court that is dedicated to tennis, but the other can be tennis or pickleball. You know, I think we, part of this is, we need to see what the interest is, but I think the interest is going to be pretty significant.
Yeah, probably the only thing, you would need certain types of lines there, whether you do the, this, use the tennis nets, or, you know, use the, the temporary nets, because you would need nine lines, obviously, for them to, to do the court. And usually, like what they've been done is, like I say, they'll do a light blue painting with that. So, you know, it doesn't interfere with the visualization with the tennis court as much.
Yeah, again, at the, at the place where I have seen this happening, they painted the light blue lines onto the tennis court, and all of the games have been across the regular tennis net, just dropped down. But it's interesting to think about, I, I wonder if there might be too many lines painted if we were to paint lines for a pickleball on both sides of a tennis net, so that you could play it kind of longitudinally versus latitudinally? I don't know if that's correct, but you know, I would, I would imagine that maybe we might want to go for fewer permanent lines, at least to start, but I don't know how the rest of the commission feels.
I agree with you on that, Blythe. I think the fewer lines, the better, and if we're not running into a capacity issue, then why not go ahead with using the nets that we have first?
I feel we should, yeah, stick with just the two courts for now and see how it goes. The painting, I don't know. I don't have an opinion on that. I know we have other tennis greats on, in our commission.
Yeah, I mean, Michael and Julia, how do you guys feel about the quote-unquote incursion on tennis here?
I think any appropriate use of the tennis courts is wonderful. And I could see it really taking off in town, so I'm really supportive.
Yeah, I feel the same way. I think, I think it makes sense to try it out with the existing nets. And yes, see, see where it goes, but I just was thinking of long-term storage for the temporary nets, you know, whether, where to fit them, I guess, because I've seen them, and they're, you know, they're, they're large, so I, I don't know if they're supposed to sit outside all year, or, but I think using the existing nets would make sense.
Yeah, I would agree, use, you know, let's, let's start with the existing nets, and we can paint, paint a couple of lines. I know in the last meeting, somebody talked about tape for the lines, but I don't know, James, how you feel about that, just kind of a lighter blue tape, like a painter's tape on the tennis court surface, or no?
I've been to some places where they've tried tape, unfortunately, as you're playing, usually, you'll catch edges and, and end up ripping that up. And with the cost of the tape and kind of having to take the time to kind of reline it all the time, you know, it, it, it gets to be kind of more of a hassle and, than a good thing. I think your idea of, as far as starting out, just, you know, painting the light blue lines on the two courts, using the existing nets is a great way to start, and seeing how demand is for the courts. You know, that would, you know, and, and the thing is, it's a fast-moving game, so usually, games go 15, 20 minutes, and people rotate in and out. So usually, that could accommodate, you know, 16 to 24 people could probably enjoy that on a rate, you know, just on those two things, and, and, you know, moves along pretty quickly, so I would see how that would work for you, and then if you see it, what typically happens, if it, if it really starts to grow, then often what they do is they keep one tennis court, and then just what someone talked about, going the other direction on the courts, you could actually fit four pickleball courts on that one side. And then, you know, you just have the two, you know, you have four pickleball courts on one side of your facility, and then your tennis court on the other side. So that's just another thing that, that's down the line, but I often see that happen with tennis courts, how they transition, depending on demand.
Kent Park and Rec collects 10% when we do fee programs like this, so we could even, you know, go up to $45 for the hour or something. We could talk about that more specifically when we get closer and we have a director who you'll be dealing with by that time.
And just so you know, I mean, with most of the people that, that I deal with, I usually do 25%, you know, so, you know, you take 25% of that, so and that, that's been perfectly fine with me with the places I've worked at.
Let's do it.
Would you like to make a motion, Blythe?
I don't know a lot about it, but I know that it's super popular, and I have friends that are doing it all over the place. I have a friend in Tennessee, it's like the new thing, and she says, no one wants to play tennis anymore. Well, not no one, Julian and Michael, but it's just, I think it's, I feel like it's going to be a hit.
I really think so too, and I, and I don't want to characterize it as an older person's sport, but I do feel like, you know, we, we put a lot of effort on our commission into programming for younger kids, and this is not really something that's kind of an all, you know, this is, this is something that's an all ages, an all ages activity, and I really do think it's going to take off, so, so I'm all for it. So if people are ready for a motion, I'd be happy to make one.
And with that, I I agree, are things are geared towards seniors or kids, and we really don't have a lot of programs for adults? So, middle-aged adults, you know, young and middle-aged adults, so this is great.
Great, I, I think we're ready to make a motion, Blythe, do you want to make it?
Sure, I would like to move that we go ahead with a plan to offer pickleball in the spring. Once James is back, and we will deal with all of the details another time, a little further down the road.
I'll just correct that to say summertime.
Summertime, okay.
Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Julia. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Great, thank you very much. James, you're welcome. Does anybody have any more questions for James? Are we good? You're welcome to stay on the meeting, or we can be in touch, you know, when you come out, or when you want to start advertising. Again, we should have a director within the month, so you'll be dealing with them. And they'll help you set everything up, and we do, we help with, you know, help or do the advertising around town, social media, through Park and Rec. We, we do all the registration and everything, and we can definitely talk about those details more.
Okay, well, thank you for consideration. I'm really looking forward to it, and I really like, appreciated the comment about, you know, what's nice about it is, in fact, what kind of triggered this was when I was out there, a family came out. And it's usually the kids that just love to have, you know, do this and get their parents going. It was invented as a family game in 1965. And so it really caters to all sizes, shapes, and whatever, so, you know, I think, think it's hopefully something that'll serve your community well for everybody.
Appreciate your time.
All right, thank you very much, we'll be.
Thank you, good night.
Good night.
All right, we will move on to Director's Search Committee update. Julia? You want to take care? Are you ready to do that, prepared?
Well, sure, I can be prepared. So, we aren't in the executive session, so I'll just say that we had two days of in-person interviews with eight candidates. Or actually, it ended up being seven, because someone backed out, and then, and actually, we had something close to 32 applicants, so we narrowed that down to eight based on location, and then also their experience and their resumes. Since then, we have narrowed it down to a smaller number, I'll just say for now, because we haven't communicated with everybody, but we're in the process of kind of going through next steps of actually doing some park walkthroughs with the candidates, and then we've asked them to put together a proposal for us for how they would use the space that we have for summer camp. And hopefully, with the smaller group that we have now, we'll end up coming to you guys shortly, asking you to approve our recommendation for a director.
Perfect. Thank you very much, any questions?
No, just thank you guys so much for all of your work on this, it's a lot of work.
Well, I think that we've all been really encouraged by the pool of applicants we've seen, so fingers crossed, we end up in a really good place.
All right. Any update on the Bylaws Committee meeting?
Yeah, we did meet last week, and we're meeting again this week, and we are really just kind of looking at working with Gene to talk about, do we need bylaws and a constitution in addition to the ordinance that was set by the town, so we're really just looking at the foundational documents at this point, where the overlap is, anything that is contradictory, and, and so that's kind of where we are. It was very organizational, but we were happy to meet, we met in person last week, which was lovely, and we're meeting again this week, so maybe more for the next one, but we are definitely meeting inactive.
Perfect. One second. All right. The RFP for the maintenance worker, which we will call the seasonal maintenance contractor, is that what you wanted, John?
Yeah, that's it. So I, I talked to Joyce, we worked it out, and we're ready to go with it, to put it in the paper, because these guys will be taking off for the winter.
Do you have it handy, so we can look at it before you post it?
I just sent it to you before.
Emailed it?
Yep.
Let me see if I can.
I can't do the share from here. Did you get it?
Hang on. Where'd y'all go now?
It's, should, I just sent it to you.
I have it, I'm just trying to figure out how to share it.
Okay.
Takes me a second.
I can probably send it to everybody from here, would you like that?
I think I got it.
Okay.
Can y'all see that?
Yes.
This is the notice, "The town of Kent Park and Recreation are seeking bids for seasonal park maintenance work for the year 2022. This work involves cutting back brush, spreading wood chips to control weeds along with using 30% vinegar as chemical applications are banned, and also maintain Emery Park Trail by clearing debris and filling washout areas on the path and at Commons Park. Liability policies required to the town and its citizens for walk-through, please call." I would not have them call that number, I would put in an email. And you might want to run it by Blythe or someone to correct.
It could use a bit of, it could use a little bit of sweetening up there, yeah.
Well, can you do it real quick for tonight, so I can get it done tomorrow and send it out, because the deadline?
Yeah, yeah, just send it, send it to me, and I'll, and I'll, I'll, I'll sweeten it up.
Did you send it to all of us, John, or just me?
Just you.
Okay.
Yeah, I can do that, I'll do that tonight after the meeting.
Yeah, and then I can get it in the paper, because these guys take off just right after Christmas, and you don't see them until April.
Yeah.
March.
Okay, good there, we're gonna stop sharing. Okay, good there. We're gonna stop sharing. All right. Anything else on the RFP? All right, we'll move on to Parks Master Plan.
I don't think there are any.
Yeah.
There.
Keep it on there. Just.
Yep.
2122 monthly budget report. I do not have anything. We'll definitely get something for January so we can see where we're at. A five-year capital plan I sent you all a little while ago. I don't know if you've had a chance to see it, but it's the paperwork, the packet for adding anything into the capital plan for this year. If it gets added in and accepted, then it won't be available for five years. But I did want to bring up the thought on the Parks Master Plan. And basically reiterate what I've said before is five years ago, a commission put money into the capital plan and labeled it for parks, for parks upgrades. Some is Emory Park and some is for Kent Commons. So I feel that that money should be used there. Changing it requires going to the town meeting, which the next one I believe is in a town may at the yearly annual town meeting. Sometimes they schedule them in between or whatever, but so rather than changing the funding, I suggest that we use the funding that we have to improve the parks. There's simple ideas we can use such as putting in new equipment, which would do huge upgrades at the same time. You know, getting the burrs out of there, doing simple upgrades and then putting money into a capital plan to hire an architectural firm. Then it would be five years, but that's just my suggestion. I don't know what else anybody has interest in and putting into the capital plan. Do we put another 100,000 in there and earmark it for more improvements or?
So we have.
If we put money in for the Parks Master Plan architect, the landscape architect. And then in five years, that commission decides not to do that, they can also go to a town meeting and have the funds transferred to a different use.
My biggest concern would be, I mean, we, we knew when we were initially on the Parks Master Plan that we were going to go to the town for assistance. And we did, and that did, that kind of just bounced back to us. So I would just want to make sure that we weren't just deciding that we could use the, this, this money that's been earmarked for the master plan, knowing that we would need more than had been budgeted for swings and stuff like that. And then we wind up maybe a year or two from now with not enough left in the budget. So how does that work?
Can you say that again? I don't know that I quite followed that.
I feel like when we came out with the, when the subcommittee for the Parks Master Plan came forward with a proposal, we recognized that it was going to be more than we needed. And we, I feel like at that point, we went to the first selectment. Somebody correct me because it's, at this point, it feels like it was.
That was for advertising. Or something.
Just for, well, I don't know if that was just for, I, I don't, I don't remember. I did not get a chance to really look at this thing that you sent today, but you know, I mean, the master plan is going to cost money and I just want to make sure that we are, I, obviously I want to put in what we need in the parks right now. But I want to make sure we're also not shooting ourselves in the foot by deciding that we could spend it on X or Y, and I know it would have to be agreed upon by all of us. Just because we don't have a master plan ready to go.
So the month, the capital plan funds are earmarked for playgrounds. So that doesn't have anything to do with our yearly budget. And that money's sitting there waiting for us to use it.
Okay. Okay.
That, yeah. Nothing to do with our annual budget.
Okay.
Yeah, we should use some of that money to get a survey because there was no map back in 2019 of Kent Commons Park. So that should have been done already. Unfortunately, it's not. The other thing too is that, I mean, there's a lot of problems with, if you're going to build a house on a piece of land, you got to check for the drainage. And unfortunately, we have bad drainage problems over there at Kent Commons Parks. We got constant wa- washouts on the, on the walkways for the elderly. So I mean, you could easily spend that 50,000 on doing repairs for drainage and then trying to get a map in there and maybe one other thing. So, yeah.
I don't know if that's a specific use. We'd have to look into the details of.
Well, it's part of, it's part of Kent Commons Park.
It is, but I believe it's actually for like, I don't know, this is what I'm saying. We have to look a little bit more. And I think Barbara sent me that information. On whether it's like earmarked specifically for equipment or if it's equipment and repairs or what it actually says it can be used for.
Yeah, I remember in our last meeting, we did talk about the fact that we needed an updated survey. Right, John?
Yep, exactly. Yeah.
I thought somebody was working on that. Where's that money? Is, is that capital money that we're going to use for that?
Depends. Like, well, again, what I just said is we have to see if the capital money states repairs or how it's worded.
Isn't Abigail getting, getting bids right now from surveyors?
I thought, John, didn't you say last time you were going to try to reach out to Hox?
No, I gave her Hox's name and phone number, so she was supposed to follow up, but I guess she didn't do that.
Well, she's not here, so we don't know if she did or not.
Yeah.
I was going to say that, that $150,000 on the Emory Park Pool is, is quite large. But I mean, considering what, what, what we saw when we were up there walking around, I mean, you could easily spend three quarters of that 150 this year going into next year for repairs at Emory Park pool.
Well, I think that actual usage is maybe the actual usage, you know, when we decide to actually use it, we can discuss how it's going to be used. I was trying to see if I had this email. Floating. To see what it says it might be able to tell you here.
We even have enough money in there for the tennis courts for painting, 975.
Yeah, I don't know if those lines will be too expensive.
No, I don't think so. 20 by 40, whatever it was, 44.
All right. So let me just read you this email. This is from the treasurer on Park and Rec Capital Funding Information. In fiscal year 17, when the five-year capital plan was being formulated during the fiscal year 18 budget process, Park and Rec requested $100,000 in the fiscal year 22 for the Kent Common Park Playground. And 100,000 in fiscal year 24 for the Emory Park Playground. See two and three for the original request. On 7/15, the Emory Park Repair Pool Floor Appropriation was fully funded. That appropriation was never spent and it remains untouched in the capital funds. And seven, on 7/1 of 13, Tennis Court Kent Common Appropriation was fully funded for 100,000. That appropriation was utilized in fiscal year 14. And $975 remains of that original appropriation. Currently, the capital fund is showing the following cash balances. Emory Park Repair Pool Floor for 150,000, which I think we should definitely talk about doing. Tennis Courts Kent Commons 975. So yeah, we could use that to paint pickleball lines. And Playground Kent Common for 50,000 is sitting in there. So there's a lot of playgrounds that you can get, you know, big pieces installed for 50,000. Just one idea. Currently, the capital plan is showing the follow, following future appropriations. Fiscal year 23, the playground at Kent Common for 50,000. Fiscal year 24 for the playground at Emory Park, 100,000. Fiscal year 25, Tennis Courts, 20,000. Three color system with lines and two tennis courts is what that's for. None of the cash balance funding or the capital plan funding can be redirected or used for any other purpose without Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance and taxpayer approval, hence the town meeting.
So if we decide in two years that we want to scrap the Emory Park Playground because we want to give it back to nature, for example, is one of the things we were talking about. That is money lost and we cannot reclassify 100,000 dollars or whatever it was three years from now for something else that is just.
You can, you have to take it to a town meeting for approval.
Yeah.
Just change the wording, but you have to do it through a town meeting. That's not bad.
As long as all that, those dollars are in play, I don't necessarily have a problem with that.
So I just want to make sure that especially Abigail gets to know that she'll, you know, I sent to everybody, she'll see that thing. But if we have to have it in by January 7th. If there's anything we want to add.
So how do you want to involve, is she the only one who's not here tonight?
Yeah.
Yeah. How do you want to make sure she's okay with that?
Um.
How do we do that? You know, between, is that between you and her?
She can email everybody. It's not between me and hers, between all of us. So, you know, just like if anybody had an appropriation request tonight, she can have an appropriation request. If she so chooses. You know, to bring that forward to the commission to decide. All right. Anything else on the capital plan or the expenditures package?
So we, we, we have until January 7th to get anything on there that would then be five years from now. I guess since the pool has 150,000, it would be helpful to understand what that can be spent on because top of my head, that seems like an area that has had a lot of reoccurring maintenance issues in the past year. And then do we think we need to put the drainage for Kent Commons under that as well? I just want to, I know January 7th is going to come very fast and I hate to lose another year towards that.
So you're talking about drainage, putting money in for the drainage?
For example, yes.
Yeah, I think that's a good thing, except you got to wait five years for it. It's only five that stays.
Yeah.
The 150,000 is marked for repair of pool floor. And I think one reason that the pool floor is in that condition is because we've had to wait five years. When was that money? Yeah, that just became available in what, 2020?
Yep.
Oh no, and 7/15, oh no, that was from 2015. That it was fully funded, that appropriation was never spent. So it has been sitting there. So that excuse doesn't work. I think it's just a commission making the decision to actually do it and getting somebody in there or whatever we decide. Which we won't be lowering it till the spring at this point. So we can talk about it next month or February. As far as 150 goes, but if anybody, again, if you want to get something into that capital fund, we need to decide quickly. If we, maybe we do a quick meeting in the beginning of January.
I think, I think it would be a good idea. Yeah, I think it would be a good idea to have all of us be able to spend some time looking at it, including Abigail. And then we could have a quick meeting in January.
Absolutely. All right, 2020 meeting dates. Diane sent out the list. Do we have, you guys have that? Hang on, let me see where it is. I think I can share it.
Blythe, I sent you that RFP. Did you get it?
I don't know. I didn't click away because I've got the agenda open in another.
Okay, that's right.
So I'll look, I promised John, right after this.
Okay. Um. So as you see, the potential meetings are in black, the regular meetings are in blue. I would like to hopefully believe that once we get the director in and trained, that we won't need all these second meetings. This is, a lot of this becomes a pain because the director will be making a lot of these decisions. But any one of us who's doing some of this stuff can't make that decision on our own. We are one eighth of a decision. So we end up having a lot of meetings because there's no, you know, there's no top person to make this, the decision, we have to make it together. So I would like to think that we will not need all these meetings.
Well, Lynn, we were talking at our, this is one of the things we were looking at with the bylaws and things and we, we, the way that the commission is set up, really the power of the director to make any decision short of the permission of the commission is quite limited.
So I don't know that it is, Blythe. I think, I think if you're talking about the interim director, that's a totally different story. You have a brand new person who came in who needed to be trained. There wasn't micromanaging there. There wasn't overreach there. The person didn't, you know, same with the new director coming in, they'll have to be trained. There's things that they will be deciding.
I'm just saying, the way that the language is, and I'm just, I'm, I'm only looking at this from the the point of view of the language in the bylaws and the constitution. The bylaws in the constitution say that the director's sole purpose is to execute the Park and Rec Plan as determined by the commission. So that suggests, and Jean agreed, that it really is, you know, I, I think that when Leslie was here, you know, we talked a lot about Leslie. And that Leslie had done her job for a really long time and she knew what she needed to do. And she, the, the meetings were very streamlined because it was, okay, and this is what we're going to do and this is what we're going to do. Now we have somebody obviously who needs to train in. But it is clear, and one of the things we're looking at is the language of this the bylaws. And, you know, Mike and Kate, please feel free to, to chime in since Abigail's not here. But the language of the bylaws really was quite restrictive in terms of the director's ability to do anything except to talk with the town treasurer about money.
Yeah, I mean, I think if you, if you interpreted the language literally, it, it did seem that the director couldn't do much without the commission. And we just want to make sure the, you know, the director has, you know, it kind of has a fulfilling, fulfilling experience similar to what Leslie had. And it seemed like Leslie, you know, was, was very good at making, you know, decisions on her own.
Yeah, and we, we certainly gave her that, that authority because she already, really, she already had it. And that's fine. And, and really, I mean, I as a commissioner. And that's fine. And, and really, I mean, I, as a commissioner, speaking personally, I don't want to not have the director be able to make decisions, but it is what it is in the bylaws, and this is why we're looking at the language of the bylaws going, maybe we should change it. But we were talking in our meeting the other day about nobody wants meetings every two weeks. And clearly, our meetings have been going long because we have not had a permanent director who's been trained in and has been really ready to, to run with everything. So, you know, I think that where we need to look as a commission, me personally, is do we want to look at just kind of approving all of these dates because we're going to be bringing a new director up to speed? Or because one of the ideas that we had was maybe one meeting is about programming? And another meeting is about maintenance. And because our agenda is huge for a regular, a regular meeting, so. I don't really know. Saying something that agrees or disagrees with the meeting schedule is proposed, but I think when we were looking at it, we felt like we needed to have additional meeting time, so we didn't have two hour long meetings. Nobody is at their best after two hours. And maybe there's a better way to divide up how we meet since there are so many things that we are responsible for. And then maybe once the director gets going, we will realize we don't need to have additional meetings by April or, or May or something like that, but maybe it's a good idea to just approve a schedule of meetings when we can cancel one or the, you know, one or the other. Rather than having to schedule special meetings as we've been doing for the past several months. Sorry, I'm tired.
No, Blythe, I think you articulated that beautifully.
I think that's what we didn't, isn't that kind of what we planned to do? Like, we scheduled two meetings, then we only use the second one if we need it. So we don't have to warn another meeting.
Yeah, I think that was the whole thing. We just didn't want to have to keep running around trying to figure out when a special meeting might be. This schedule, if we actually warn all of these meetings, we don't have to use all of these meetings. We can just use the regular meetings certainly, but we don't have to use the potential meetings if we don't want to, but at least they're warned ahead of time and we don't have to run around crazy.
Right.
With something.
And, and in fact, the January third meeting could be one of those meetings if we want to talk about the capital budget before the January seventh deadline. But I agree. I mean, it would be nice if we could delegate a little authority to the to the director eventually. Let her, you know, or him make, you know, decisions and we sort of just approve them or not quickly. It seems like we're spending a lot of time.
That's definitely one of our goals that we talked about in our, in our subcommittee meeting.
Yeah.
Okay, so if, I don't care if we keep all the meetings, so that's fine. Sorry, my vocals. The only thing I would suggest is instead of the February twenty-eighth, we can't do it on the third Monday. That's the fourteenth Valentine's Day. It gets confusing when we do all these because if you do January seventeenth, like, there's only one week in between February twenty-eighth and March seventh, right? So that doesn't make sense. You've got two weeks here. So this is the regular meeting.
I, I think I had them spaced differently and, and somebody said, let me see, let me go back and look. There was a, there was a conflict with something. I think it was I was doing every second and every fourth.
But we have to do the third Monday and work from there.
Right, somebody didn't want to do the fourteenth, so.
Well, that's Valentine's Day, so yeah.
Well, we could do the seventh and the twenty, twenty-first instead, but twenty first is President's Day. Yeah, I think.
It's not about, it's not about, I'm sure it's not really about Valentine's Day. It's probably about President's Day.
Oh, I think that's what we did. Yeah, I think that's what we did. We bumped it. We bumped it a week. So we have the.
Right, the second, so the the third week is President's Day, but the second week is Valentine's Day.
I don't care what day we do, personal.
Mondays are so hard, you guys. I mean, that's where you, you followed everything. All holidays are on Mondays. It's.
So we could do the, we could do Tuesday, February the fifteenth.
I mean, the special meetings, the, the potential meetings could be anytime. Again, the, the bylaws say every third Monday, so until those are changed formally, we certainly need to keep our regular scheduled meetings every third Monday unless there's a holiday.
So once these go into the town, they won't be these additional dates, they'll be regular meetings. They won't be special meetings.
Right, but we had talked last time about we could have a schedule of regular meetings. There were too many regular meetings that we could just cancel the extra one, not the regular.
Right, we always keep the third Monday.
Yep.
Because that's in our bylaws, but I'm just saying by adding these dates and putting them on the town calendar, they've become, they're not special meetings anymore. They're all, they would all be just regular meetings.
Well, that doesn't matter because we could just cancel one. So we want to do, we want to do the fifteenth and the twenty-eighth in February. I can change that. Is there any other conflicts with this?
I would keep the seven, I don't know if I'd keep the seventh. The only reason that I was thinking about the seventh is because we're going to have the new director in and we may need it, I don't know.
We can always cancel.
Mm-hmm. So put the regular meeting as the.
Regular meetings are in blue.
As the fifteenth.
So February fifteenth is the, is the regular meeting, right?
Is that, is that the third Monday of?
No, the twenty-first is, no, that, no, I'm looking at the wrong month. The, yeah, the twenty-first of February is, is President's Day. If we're looking at.
And so I don't think we can have a regular meeting scheduled for a day when town hall will be closed and it's a federal holiday.
Right, so we're seeing the fifteenth and twenty-eighth of February.
I don't think we need the twenty-eighth because you have the extra one is March seventh, which is a week later.
We have two, we have one extra meeting every month.
Right.
Let's say all the black meetings went away, right? All the ones in black, not in blue font, went away and we were still only looking at one meeting a month. We'd be looking at every one of these dates being the third Monday of the month as per the bylaws, except for ones that fall on a holiday. Like February twenty-first would be, and that's why we're pushing it to twenty-eighth.
Right.
So the blue ones, I think, need to stand as they are because.
But if you look back at January, from January seventeenth to February twenty-eighth, that's a month and ten days, eleven days. Whatever, right? And then if you have the twenty-eighth to the seventh, that's one week. Whether we use the seventh or not, I'm just saying, looking on here, that's two meetings scheduled a week apart.
Yeah, I wanted to keep, when I was in the schedule, I wanted to keep them on Mondays.
Right, and, and again, I think the whole thing revolves around this structure of what the bylaws say.
I know, I get it.
It's crazy.
I didn't, I didn't schedule them on any other day of the week because I figured other people have other meetings those days. Like, I have a Wednesday meeting every third Wednesday. Or is it second? I don't even remember. But, um, I mean, okay, do you want, you want to take out the, you want to leave the twenty-eighth as a regular meeting and take out the seventh of February?
Then we have, whatever, I'm just saying that we have six or five weeks between meetings.
Yeah, um, so.
That's why I'm advocating for the fifteenth.
So we have to schedule one special meeting. That's not a big deal. Just take, just take out one of those meetings.
Or just make the seventh, the fifteenth and be done with it.
You want to just do one meeting in February on the fifteenth? Does anybody have anything on Tuesday night?
Every other meeting's a Monday, right?
Yes, I think so.
So what is it? Is the four, the problem is that the fourteenth is a Monday? Is that it?
Yep.
We are all so in love.
I could care less if we do it on Valentine's Day. I'm not twelve. Oh, my God. Nobody's going out to dinner on Valentine's Day.
You could make it the fifteenth. You could make it the fifteenth, I'm sure.
You can do it the fourteenth, I just.
We won't need to use it anyway. Hopefully, we don't need to use it anyway.
All right, so we're just, so we'll, we'll get, we're just going to schedule one meet, one regular meeting for February, which will be the fifteenth, and there will be no potential meeting.
Or, or you could do it the twenty-second. That might be better, the next Tuesday.
Yeah, leave all of your blue meetings blue for regular meetings because those are the ones that we have to follow that damn schedule.
Except when it falls on a holiday.
Except when it falls on a holiday.
Which is February, which is what we're talking about.
Right, so, so leave all of your blue ones blue because you have very carefully looked at the third Monday for our regular meeting. And at this point, we're still talking, we're, we're talking about potential meetings, but people in town will see that we have a difference, you know, a schedule of regular meetings, but we will know which ones are really the regular ones and which ones are not.
Right, right. All right, so we'll have, so we'll schedule, we'll leave the seventh and we'll do the twenty-second instead of the twenty-eighth.
That would make sense because then we'll have a few, there'll be more than a week till the next March, you know, March seventh meeting.
And the twenty-second is the third Monday.
No, the twenty-first is the third Monday, but that's a holiday, so we'll do it on Tuesday, the twenty-second. Does that make sense? Rather than the fifteenth, which is a Tuesday, on the second week.
That works.
All right.
Okay.
Yeah, that's why the meeting takes three hours.
So we didn't find any other issues with the schedule here, so we can approve this. Let me see.
So September twelfth. Same thing. You have a star. Okay, I think that's okay. And December twenty-sixth.
Yeah, I just want to be able to see the rest of the area.
Oh, yeah, yeah, sorry. Had this.
Meetings are only a week apart. Because that was because Labor Day was the day before, the week before, and again, I wanted to keep, keep them on Mondays, but if you guys wanted to get if you want to make it the sixth, the day after Labor Day, we could do that instead, the sixth and the nineteenth of, of September. Or would you rather just keep it the way it is, but they're only a week apart?
I would advocate for the sixth because it's beginning of school year and there could be a lot to talk about with.
Okay, we may not even need it, so we'll change September to the sixth and the nineteenth.
And then December twenty-sixth?
Yikes.
I'd like to take out the December fifth meeting and put the December twenty-sixth to the twelfth.
But is that the third? Third Monday?
You want to just do one meeting in December on the twelfth, right in the middle?
Absolutely, and then schedule a special meeting if you need it.
Okay. Because Hanukkah is the nineteenth and then the day after Christmas is the twenty-sixth.
Yeah, that's what it was. Hanukkah starts.
All right, so in December is the only month we will only have one meeting scheduled for. We won't have that second potential meeting. And we can always schedule one if need be.
All right, so can I have a motion to accept the meeting dates as amended? Oh, and Diane, at the top, you see that I changed, took out the via Zoom unless informed otherwise?
Yes.
I'd like to get us to start meeting in person.
Yeah, we'll just put meeting time, whatever, okay.
And, and take out the little potential regular meeting and potential meeting?
Yes, and I'll just put.
What you got is mine is totally, just change those dates. Take that. Take this part out. Change these dates that we discussed and that needs to be.
How are we going to know? Should we have? How are we going to know which ones?
Because they're all regular meetings now. Yes, our bylaw says that they're.
All right, we'll just go month by month, whether we're going to cancel it or keep it. I got it. Each meeting will say, do we need the next meeting? Okay, motion to approve amended meeting schedule for twenty twenty-two. Did I say that right?
Yep, can I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Michael. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you. All right, after school program, I'm going to stop. Okay, is Anna still with us? Hey, Anna.
Hi.
Thanks for waiting. So I don't know if everybody knows, but this is Anna, who has been our wonderful ASP director. She's going to hang with us until we find hi, Kennedy.
A huge thank you, Anna.
No problem. Thank you.
So, yeah, Anna's been amazing. She's been taking up everything. She's cleaning a closet. She's been able to pick up some more craft items and pens and markers and things that the kids need. She's, she's just, I can't even express how happy I am to have her in there. You want to give it a little update on how it's going? You are in public session, so. Tell us maybe how many kids you've been having and.
A lot of kids. Usually sixteen per day. But I have this past week, it's been low numbers like ten. It's been good. It's been difficult only because I have the people who have been helping me. It's just a little difficult, but other than that, everything's been fine. Can be, can you turn the TV off? Um, I mean, it's been good. I think the kids are happy. I'm happy with the kids, but it's a lot of work, so it's a, you know what it is? It's a tough time of day for everybody, especially children, so. I think that's the biggest thing. It's just a tough time of day, but I think it's going well, so.
Perfect. All right, any questions for Anna? Kennedy, say hi to grandpa.
Say hi to Bob.
All right.
How are we doing for staffing moving forward?
So we, the after-school director committee is meeting on Wednesday. I believe, I'm hoping Wednesday, I'm reaching out to, for interviews, so I got to make sure just that the people are available at that time. And we'll go from there, so hopefully in the next week or so, we'll be able to hire somebody for that position as well. And Anna has graciously said that she will stay and train them. And Anna has graciously said that she will stay and train them, and I think they will be in good hands. We we did hire another counselor. We'll discuss that in a little while, and it's someone that Anna is familiar with. It's actually Rufus's wife's grandson. I'm not sure how to say that correctly, but she's, he's been working for a couple of days now, and I believe that's going fine, so she does have some more support in there. Anna, anything else?
Uh, no, that's it. I was joining to see what the deal was, that's all. No problem.
It's awesome that you were able to jump in.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, actually, I mean, it's actually been fun, you know, considering, but I do love the kids and my kids get to go with me, so we're all pretty happy with that.
You like ASP, Kennedy?
Yeah.
Yeah, my kids love it. They're really bummed that I'm not gonna do the whole year. I mean, if I have to do the whole year, I will, but I want to go all year long.
Alrighty, um, we're gonna move along to the Mohawk Mountain Ski Club, Julia?
Yep, so we had 32 children sign up for the program, and registration is now closed. The first day, I believe, is January 6th, and they'll all be put into their groups. We are all squared away with Mohawk, like have our check over to them, and other than getting some waivers signed that Mohawk requires for group ski instruction, then we're pretty much set to go. We'll follow up with some emails to the people who have signed up, just with like week of instructions, but I think everybody's really excited, and it'll be great.
Perfect. Any questions for Julia? Alright, on to winter program. I have nothing to say for Learn to Skate. I meant to reach out to Lee to ask her how many signups she had and how it was going and stuff, but I didn't get to it. Basketball? Was that you, Julia? I can't remember. Anyone?
Uh, that was Abigail, actually. And she, she had reached out ahead of this evening's meeting, since she wasn't able to make it to say that. Hold on one second, let me get my notes, and Blithe, feel free to chime in. I know she reached out to you as well. But, so Michelle Mott has said that she is okay with us using the gym. And Abigail was thinking that we do the same ages that we did for soccer, so pre-K through second grade. We would do six weeks, and it would be 90-minute sessions, starting at 5:15 on the weeknight that we chose. The only thing is that we need, well, obviously, we need to find coaches, but Michelle has also said that we need to have somebody, ideally from Parks and Rec at the door, basically as like security, since nobody from the school will be there to make sure that people don't enter the building who aren't supposed to.
Yeah, the doors are locked, so I remember have to listen for the buzzer and go let people in. So what about 3rd, 4th, and 5th grade? Is school doing any basketball programs?
The middle school has teams that play against other schools.
Is that 7th and 8th, or 6, 7, 8?
I'm not sure for.
I think it's 6, 7, and 8.
Okay.
Yeah, you would know better than I would.
I think we need to include 3rd, 4th, and 5th graders in there as well.
I think that they would be psyched to do it.
I, I think it's, you know, I, I was looking at this, and I'm thinking, pre-K to, to 2nd grade, and then I'm looking at 90 minutes, and I was like, oh, my goodness.
Yeah, I know.
Time, so maybe, maybe something that, you know, I know Abigail was, you know, she's doing something else, but maybe one of the things to consider in here was, maybe it was 45 minutes for one group and 45 for another. I don't know. I'll text her right now.
And Julia, maybe if you go into the office in the files, there might be some old basketball files, just to look for, look through for tips or information or anything, or what the previous program was like.
Yeah, I can, I'll, I'll let Abigail know that, and hopefully, I, she's kind of been running with this, but wasn't able to make this evening's meeting, but I'm happy to help her out with that. But I'm a little bit at capacity with the ski and the director chart, but once that's over, I'm happy to dive in.
Really get you there.
I have a question. For, because I know no one's really allowed in the building. Will parents be allowed in the building for practices? Like, I can't even let the parents in for pickup. Or is that, we just take all the kids and?
I don't know that answer yet.
I don't know that answer yet either. You know, my, my children are doing basketball at Chapag, and a few other families from Kent are doing that as well. They have like a clinic Saturday mornings for the younger kids, and then they have travel teams for 3rd grade and up, and that school, like granted, you can access the gym at a different place, like you just go through the gym doors, but both there, Woodbury, Goshen, Litchfield, in all of those, I've been to practices and games, and as long as parents are masked, then we're all fine being in there. So, I don't know. I don't know, like, that to me suggests that, like, it's not a state thing. It's school-specific right now, so I think we'll have to go with whatever Michelle recommends. But I do know that other elementary and center schools are allowing parents to come in and watch practices and games.
Are we talking about the Kent Center School Gym?
Yes.
Yeah. Alright, anything else on basketball?
Well, Abigail, I know, was hoping that we would vote on agreeing to offer the program. I don't know if there are now too many questions that we don't know the answers to, but she was hoping to get it started the second or third week of January, depending on how quickly they could get she or she and a helper could get organized and find coaches, but she did. She was hoping that we could vote to do it, so that we didn't have to then come back around and vote to do it, because we're gonna need to advertise it. And I've texted her about grades 3 to 5 and, and parents, but I don't know, she'll be able to get back to me right now, so.
And like her to reach out to the other towns and see if there's any travel basketball going on?
She said, yeah, this is not a traveling program.
Correct, but we are leaving out 3rd, 4th, and 5th graders.
Well, that's, that's my, my guess is that maybe this was only just, okay, oh, she just got back to me, okay, it says, can we stick to the skills for pre-K through 2, and skills development for pre-K through 2 now? What I'm proposing is skills development, like what we offered this fall, no organized games, no referees, one day a week of drills, so kids can learn the game. Without a director, I'm not sure we have the bandwidth to offer anything more. I've done the legwork for a skills development, one day a week, pre-K through 2. Most families that participated in soccer at this level would like to participate in this program. So this is just a pre-K through 2 skills development program, no travel. For now.
Given how things went trying to get travel soccer going, then my guess is that the other towns are not doing travel basketball right now. I'm not sure. I don't know. I don't want to force Abigail to take on more than she's willing to, but like, I don't really think that it would be too much extra work for us, as long as we have the coaches to try to divide up some of the time to give 3rd through 5th grade some skills development, but I don't know. Also, just picturing soccer. We had so many kids for the pre-K through 2nd soccer skills development. If we had that many kids come for basketball, then we'd probably want to split up the 90 minutes anyway, having like pre-K through, or pre-K in kindergarten, do the first 45, and then first and second, the second 45, because we're not gonna have as much space as we did on the soccer fields. So, sorry, I'm just thinking out loud, but maybe we should just keep it to those groups for now, and then add more if we can later.
You want to put a motion together?
Sure, I I'll make a motion for the commission to proceed with the basketball skills development program for pre-K through 2nd grade as Abigail, or as I have laid it out per Abigail's instructions, starting around the 2nd or 3rd week of January.
Have a second?
Second.
Any more discussion, some questions? All those in favor, say aye, please?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Alrighty. We will move on to Tai Chi, which I have no information on. Did you see anything in the emails, Blithe?
Not at all, no.
And tanks you do, we have to look at. Alright, commission appointments. I sent you guys an email. Where I wrote it down somewhere here. So commission appointments for January. The expirations are Michael, Kate, Diane, and Julia. I've heard from Diane and Julia on a yes. Kate, we got your email. I would ask you to stay on for a little while, since you are with the bylaws committee, and till we can get a few things settled within the commission, so we aren't adding to our plate of looking for another commissioner. Although we could happily boost one of the alternates up. So, obviously, your decision, but that would be my request.
No, I'm happy to, Lynn.
Okay, thank you. And Michael? Can I?
Yeah, I'm in, sorry. I, I just get behind all my emails.
Not a problem. I knew I'd see you tonight, so thank you very much. I will forward that to the town clerk.
Yay, you guys, yay.
Where am I here? Okay. ASP Director's Search Committee update. Basically, I said before that we have a meeting with interviews this week. I'll keep everybody apprised of that. Yeah. Okay, at this time, I would like to have a motion to go into executive session to discuss personnel, inviting Rufus in. And yeah, I think that's it for now. Anna, I think you're the only non-commissioner, so I'd have, I'd ask you to leave the meeting.
Thank you.
If you want to come back on. That's pretty much the end of the meeting, but I can message you if you want to come back on.
I'm gonna go to bed.
Go to bed.
Thank you.
You, good night.
Do you want a motion for executive session?
Yes, please.
Move to go to executive session at 8:35 PM?
Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Right. Can I have a motion to exit executive session at 9:27?
So moved.
Thank you, Blithe. Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, um, so for ASP, we have hired another assistant counselor to help out. His name is Skylar Fitch, and I will need a motion to hire Skylar.
So moved.
Thank you, Blithe. Second?
Second.
Second, Julia? Thank you. Any discussion?
How do you spell his last name?
F-I-T-C-H.
Oh, it's Fitch, okay.
Yeah. Alrighty. All those in favor of hiring Skylar for the ASP assistant counselor position, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Any opposed? Alright. And.
Yes, sorry.
We would also like to offer potential candidates for the Park and Rec Director and a salary range of $54,000 to $60,000, depending on experience. If I could have a motion to that effect, please.
So moved.
Thank you, John. A second? Kate, thank you. Any further discussion? Right, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you very much. So our next meeting is technically December 20th. I kept that just on there in case there was anything we didn't get to, or any other decisions that had to be made quickly. So if you guys see no reason to have the meeting also next Monday, then I would say our next meeting will most likely be January 3rd. Diane, you will be sending the proposal, proposed meeting dates to Darlene, please. Is that correct?
Uh, yes, you want me to, I've been sending the minutes to you. You want me to send?
Yeah, that's fine.
I'll send, you want me to send it with the minutes to you, and then you can send it all together, or, I don't, it doesn't make a difference to me, whatever's less confusing.
Go ahead and do it.
Alright.
Send the minutes to me also, because I have to go through all those and see what she still needs. May have to have you do some extras, because there's still some missing, but some I haven't sent yet, so, and then I'll have to put on the next agenda. We have to get all those minutes that haven't been approved out to the commissioner, so they can review them, and then at our next meeting, approve them. Been something that fell through the cracks.
Okay.
You, yes, not the ones recently, but previously, some were missed, and some didn't get sent, and things like that, so. Like I said, I, something that fell through the cracks here. One of the details.
Rufus, can you give Anna my, my email?
Yeah. So what, what is it?
K-A-T-E.
You want, you're on public, just so you know.
That's cool.
Okay.
K-A-T-E-S-S-Y-M-O-N-D-S at gmail.com.
Okay.
Okay. Will do.
Alright, everyone, um, we have nothing else at this time. We can adjourn the meeting at nine thirty-one. I appreciate everyone coming out tonight, and I hope you all have a Merry Christmas. And I think the next time we'll meet is January third, I don't think, hopefully, nothing will come up impressing before that, because. All good? Alright, thank you very much, good night.
Thank you all.
Good night.
I'm going.
Are you?
Um, hang on. Alright, end recording.